Good evening, welcome to Queensbury Human Free School District Board of Education Workshop for February 22nd. Before we begin, just a couple of things that have been mentioned in a number of posts to the board. One was they asked if we would remove our masks when we speak because everyone's having a very difficult time hearing us. We're properly spaced and I think we're properly following the protocol, so I don't think that's going to be an issue. And the other thing, they asked if you're online, if the board members would turn their video on so they can see you. But it was a request, there's nothing we can do to make you do that, but it was a request in several posts that we received over the last few weeks. So with that, would please rise and join me in the salute allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a couple of presentations this evening, but before we begin, I do want to make one statement. We received resignation today from board member Joe Schreiber, and I just wanted to take a minute to thank him for his many years of service, dedicated service. He brought a lot of knowledge and experience to the board, and he will be sorely missed. So I just wanted to thank him for that. So this evening, we have a presentation regarding the budget with a particular line item that they want to add, Mr. Whitmore, Mr. Gannon will present to us.
So as we move into budget season, we're certainly sort of well underway here. We appreciate the board's Board of Education attention on this matter as we transition to finalizing a lot of what is in the budget. A lot of what's in the budget carries over from the year before in terms of staffing levels, in terms of cost-related things like equipment. A lot of the bus fleet doesn't change too much, but there's changes within the budget we wanted to discuss. So there's some tables of math here to walk through with the Board of Education tonight. Generally, we're trying to have a budget increase around 2% this year. That's our targeted number for the school district to go out to the public to have an increase in the budget of 2%. Generally, the budget codes we're expecting growth are related to contractual costs within the district. So items like construction, small increases with a general support, transportation costs, debt service as related to the school district, and then employee benefits. Employee benefits, things like health insurance, retiree health insurance are challenges for the school districts, some of the limitations we have on tax revenue. And then we would like to continue with the school district talking about the ability to address some of our infrastructure challenges. We talked a little bit more about that line item as we have in years past. So but overall, for the budget, we're looking for a small budget increase around 2%, putting us just at that $69 million. In terms of revenue, this year has been as unique as any in terms of what we're doing with revenue. When we look back at the year we're in right now, 2020-21, state aid was really a challenge for us. We put out a budget last year not knowing what state aid would actually be, and even to this day, we are not quite sure what it would be. And it's a crazy system to operate on to have so much, so many people employed based on these estimates, but at the same time, we're very optimistic about state aid. The state of New York has received significant indications from the federal government that there'll be federal relief to support local states, local school districts, and municipalities throughout the state of New York. So we're very optimistic about that state aid number. You see a really large state aid growth on this table, but I would have the Board of Education bear in mind that at this time going into 2020-21, year we're now, we were looking at proclamations to the governor for about a 20% aid cut. So we reduced our state aid estimates down accordingly to go out to the voters, but the offset to that was appropriated fund balance. So while we don't have that large number of state aid that this chart reflects, we are expected to use less appropriated fund balance in next year. What we'd like to bring to the Board of Education and subsequently to the community is a 2.5% tax levy increase, as we'll talk about a little bit later in the presentation. This is a tax levy increase that's consistent, yet now a little bit less than the growth we've had in years past, and that's important to maintain all the instructional programming that's here at the district. So the line item to talk about here are the issues at the middle school roof. Currently, there's a project going on at the middle school to deal with some security and to add furniture to the middle school, but one of the challenges we have at the middle school in particular, and also somewhat to the elementary school, is leaking in the roofs. The district has just completed the building condition survey. The building condition survey performed by our architect firm, CSR, identified about $6.6 million of roofs district-wide that are at end of useful life or have potentially fail within five years. The middle school is the most pronounced of those items. So the Board of Education has been thoughtful in its consideration of capital projects within the general fund budget in the past. We have currently in the year we're now a $700,000 capital project in terms of dealing with the middle school furniture and middle school security. What we'd ask for the Board of Education to look at is increasing that slightly to a million dollars to support dealing with these roofs and to continue the phased approach to some of the middle school furniture.
Thank you, Mr. Whitmore. We do, as you can see in these pictures, we do have roofing issues at our middle school. This is what it looks like when it rains. You can see the 55-gallon drums are out in the hallways, and we're catching, or the snow is melting, we're catching those in the hallways of the middle school. So we do have those 55-gallon drums in the hallway, and you can see we're using some of these tarps for catchment pieces in some of the classrooms, and we know we have to address some of these roofing issues. In this year's budget, we were able to, if you take a look, these are different pictures of different classrooms, but if you look at the, as you're facing the screen, the left-hand picture, you'll see these are, they really are mobile desks, but they fit together. And when we are able to get back to group work again, they've become a really, really nice tool for our middle school. So Mike Granigan has done some work this year. It's been hard in the setting we're in to be able to, we obviously can't put kids together in that setting, but when we can, we've looked at the different configurations. So in this year's budget that the voters approved last year, we're able to do almost 20 classrooms in our middle school in furniture. And the desks that you see on that left-hand side are the ones that have been selected, so 20 classrooms will be replaced this year, but that will not take care of the whole middle school. That takes care of a little, a little under a half, and that's not touching any of our science rooms, our technology rooms, or our music rooms. These are just general classrooms that these would go in. We have a teacher station as well as a lectern and a little storage area. So this really is moving out the old desks that are in the building, that have been in the building for 20 to 30 to 40 years, and moving into this phased-in new furniture. But in next year's budget, we also need to continue that trend. So you'll see that that money is appropriated in next year's budget, and we would hopefully be able to finish all the middle school classrooms except for music, art, and technology. Those three would not be completed if approved by the voters this year. Something that's really cool, that we do have in the budget for next year, and I think our incoming fourth-grade students will be really intrigued, yes, we know numbers are declining in Queensbury, but we are able to add fourth-grade band and orchestra. And that is something we've talked about for years. We've been working with Greg Berheim, the Music Department Chair, and we believe that we will be able to phase in fourth-grade band and orchestra. It typically started in fifth grade, but we've been able to move it down to fourth grade, and that is in next year's budget, and we're really excited about that. And finally, in next year's budget, just the different symbols, Project Lead the Way is still here. We are really proud to be an Ivy World School. Our students will still have access to the Early College Career Academy through SUNY and RONDEC. We still are a partner school with the Reading and Writing Project out of Columbia University. We're very proud of our Readers' Writers Workshop K5. We're still a best community for music education, and the arts are still alive and well in next year's budget. So those are pieces that we are excited about. How can you not love those photos?
So we look at next year's budget. The history of the school district really serves as a guiding post for us as we look forward, and one of the financial crises are not unique to the economy or school districts. And we have revisited this earlier in, I believe, the last budget meeting, and we looked at what the school district did in the 2007, 2008, 2009 financial crisis. The district did a lot of different things to address this crisis, but one of the items that they did that we are also recommending now is review of a structure of our debt service. So during that time period, the district reduced its debt service from about $5.1 million to $4.6 million. They reallocated that $500,000 budget to help support the instructional costs and to help essentially pay for teacher salaries and benefits to not have an impact on program. We have a similar approach to this financial crisis. So one, one of the important things that's different between then and now is that we have the tax cap calculation, and that's an important piece to talk about, how it affects us in this budget cycle. So net capital expenditures is a concept that has several different things flowing into it. One of it is debt service payments, but the offset are things like building aid. So in the last several years, we had a pretty steady net capital expenditure level of approximately $3 million. What we propose to the Board of Education is to decrease the net capital expenditures to decrease the amount of our debt that we pay in the next fiscal year to $1.9 million. That difference can be spread to help offset budget shortfalls and can be used to turn back into instruction. The challenge with that is that the voters would have to approve the budget with a 60% majority of votes. To show briefly what the tax cap calculation looks like, we are projecting going out at a levy of about $37.1 billion. That's a 2.5% increase from the year before, or about $900,000. But as a result of dropping that debt down, it results in negative tax levy calculation, which results in the need for a supermajority. So the allowable increase would be a negative $72,000. The tax levy growth is important for next year, it's important for the long-term ability of the school district, so we would propose going out at a consistent 2.5, which was where we've been over the last several years. To look a little bit at the rate, a little bit early to look at this, but at the same time, it's really important of how does this impact individual homeowner? To look at a home value of about $200,000, last year, the rate increased about 2.98%, almost 3. What we proposed to the voters is an increase of about 2.5%. The dollar increase between those two years is less, the 2022 years, so there's less growth. The estimated tax for that home before SARS is around $3,300 in 2022, and the rate you can see below grows at about 2.5%. So we're decreasing the amount of growth from 2022 to 2021. This language of the statutory tax cap requires additional language in both the notice to voters and to on ballot itself. So I'll take a moment to read through this. Adoption of the budget requires a tax levy increase of $906,000, which exceeds the statutory tax levy limit of $35 million for this fiscal year, and therefore exceeds the state tax cap. It must be approved by 60% to qualify for voters present in voting. So these numbers aren't final at this point, the board hasn't adopted the budget, but the voters would see similar language on both the ballot and on the notice that goes So just show a little history from the last seven years. District has had tax increases closer to 3% going on from 2015 to 16, all the way up to last year. So we would propose that growth for next year be 2.5%, but still build in that levy growth the district has related to contractual expenses coming up. At least it's at a seven-year average of just about 2.87%. The voter turnout at Queensbury hasn't been very strong over the last 10 to 12 years. The district has always had approval above 60% in the majority of those years. The growth in the levy has generally increased about 3% over the last several years. We would point out a little bit towards the last fiscal crisis, where the Board of Education brought a budget to the voters that was closer to 0%. Some of that was in response to the EVLR reserve that the district had spent down. We no longer have that EVLR reserve, it has been spent down, so we would encourage the Board of Education to continue to have that flat levy growth to allow for the rise in costs within the school district. So we have this growth in tax revenue. It's sort of a consistent growth from year to year. The reason that this is important, some of these concepts are somewhat simple, is that we need that tax revenue growth to deal with the offsetting instructional expenses in the next line. Instructional expenses have built-in step schedules within them, so as the, as teachers and other support staff go through the salary schedules, there's increases in salary that are automatically built into that, so there's a corresponding tax or state aid revenue that has to go along with that. One of the major bargaining issues that the district has been able to achieve with its different units is a decreased health insurance cost of the district, so you see that major concession in the 18, 19 year, but at the same time, we're back on that growth pattern and need to have revenue to offset those expenses. One of the other items outside of contractual expenses that the district needs to be aware of are the dramatic needs of some of the buildings, QES and the middle school in particular. The middle school has about $6.5 million of identified work within it. So yes, we're getting to some roofs, but we're kind of scratching in service of the need of roofs throughout the district. And QES between the pool, the roofs, and some other areas has a significant amount of money spent. This room we're standing in now and throughout the building, the high school has addressed those infrastructure needs and managed projects, but the needs continue and the systems are aging out, so we have to continue to keep that focus for the future. District has some significant challenges in terms of contractual expenses. At the end of 2022, almost every bargain unit within the district expires, so the teachers, support staff, transportation, all those leaders and nurses all have contractual settlements in 2022. So as we look forward this budget, I'd support to look into that future expenses as well. Kind of, as we get towards the end here, we have a few more workshops coming up, but we're getting towards the end with some major milestones here that we need input from the board on when we get back together. We'll have more general, we'll have final numbers for you to review. We're optimistic about increases in state aid. Typically, the governor puts proposals out, there's negotiations in terms of state policy, and then there's usually additional money that comes through the legislature. We're optimistic in terms of what, you know, federal aid is part of that, kind of just helping the, the district in continuing the programming. But we do have some timelines that we do need input from the board. On March 8th, we have to put out the notice to the school district, and that notice will contain that supermajority language. We have a bus referendum on here as well. The buses actually do better than the district's budget in most years. We're planning to transition to from diesel to gas for the cost savings that relate to the district. It's also more environmentally friendly. Typically, we ask for four buses of the community. This year, we'd like to ask for three, understanding some of the other asks within this budget, and that's an important milestone that we need input from the district. In a typical year, we probably spend more time talking about this transition to savings, so we're excited to bring these gas buses to the Board of Education. The secret resolution, so when you do a capital project, and you're going to have a vote on a capital project, there's also environmental action that's required, so all that will be needed on March 8th. We have another workshop on the 22nd. Typically, the board adopts the budget on the 12th of the public hearing, which is the opportunity for the public to weigh in on the vote or on the budget for them to vote on, it's the 10th, and then the budget vote is on the 18th, so we're just about 90 days out from the actual budget vote. So into the last slide here, I'd like to give the Board of Education an opportunity to ask questions or to provide us input. There's some obviously significant pieces to this budget we're to talk about, and there are, there's a different direction or input that the Board of Education would like to give. We are at that point where we would need that. So March 8th, we'd have a notice with a supermajority language. We'd also have school buses on the March 8th board meeting, secret resolution to deal with the leaking roofs at the middle school, and then looking at that budget adoption on April 12th. And then at this time, I can answer the board.
You may have mentioned it, I couldn't miss it. How close is, how close is the budget to not being a supermajority in terms of how close are we to fitting with the nominee?
Really, the whole levy increase is over the limit. So we're almost, we're at a small negative, so we almost want to think about that as a zero. We're going out at a 2.5, so almost that whole 2.5 is, is the increase that will need to be a supermajority. The reason for being, we're kind of getting both ends of the benefit, we're paying less in debt and having the additional tax revenue that we, we need to support the instructional program.
I'm just curious, Scott, if they, they're voting this week on, you know, the COVID stimulus package, and part of that is, you know, a federal $15 per hour minimum wage. Do you know, have they reached the point where it's like it's either, if it does pass, is it going to be phased in, or is it something that would just go there? And what kind of impact would that have on our salaries if you run those numbers down?
It's a really good question. At this point, it's early to estimate what the financial impact to the district is, but whenever there's compression at the bottom of a salary schedule, typically it raises, has an impact upwards on the schedule as well. So minimum wage is important to employees at the bottom of that schedule, but it certainly impacts the, the district's ability in terms to offer a tax rate and instructional program. So it is concerning, but it's not at a point yet where we can really quantify and say this is going to be the impact of the district.
Any more members online? Pat or Amy?
I have one quick question, and it's really small in comparison to the entire budget, but last year, in the middle of the year, there was a change regarding the SRO, and initially, the funding had come from the sheriff's department, and, and do we know moving forward, is that going to be a permanent change?
I believe the contract we have with Warren County for the SRO is one we negotiate on a, on an annual basis. So the contractual piece falls under sort of a more broad facilities contractual budget code, so we would, in all likelihood, have, have a spot for it within the budget, but the decision related to the contract has not been finalized in any way.
Thank you.
Was it the rate we talked about, was it $60,000 that we compensate Warren County and they'll pay anything above that?
So yes, currently, we did have two SROs, and at one point, a few months ago, we did have an SRO that resigned from here, so we are down to one SRO, and the contract states, I believe, and it's off the top of my head, but we pay $50,000 to Warren County, and so that's an agreement that we have with the Warren County Sheriff's Department, and I have spoken with Jim LaFarr, and I, I have not heard of an increase for next year, but I can double-check with him. But yeah, at this point in time, we only have one SRO, and by the way, he's doing phenomenal. It's just a true asset to the district, just really in touch with kids, loves kids, and is outside playing with them, reading in the classrooms. We've just had a phenomenal experience with Officer Carpenter.
Scott, I have a question. As far as the bus referendum, how many buses were we looking at total?
We would like to recommend three buses to the Board of Education. Typically, we are at about four. These would be three full-size buses. The main difference between years past, these would be gas buses, so the way both, both the warranty, the service need, and some of the environmental compliance costs work with a gas bus, the overall cost would be reduced to the district, and we can bring some of that forward in another workshop, but the number is three versus typical four.
And our trend will be year to year, eventually phasing out the diesel buses and going to gas, correct?
That, that is the plan. The diesel has a lot of cost. Once these buses get to a certain age at, with diesels, they are quite costly to repair. The engines become quite costly to repair, so the gas is a little bit easier, and we hope to move in that direction in the future, yeah. Gas seems to be the way the industry is trending.
Thank you.
I'm sure we're going to be revisiting it again, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. Thanks, Scott. Next, we have a presentation regarding fall-to athletics and the preparedness safety plan. Mr. Keys and Mr. Gannon?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mannix. So we're here tonight to talk about fall-to athletics for our second presentation. Fall-to athletics, the start date, you can see the timeline up there, the start date is March 7th, yes, that is a Sunday. I know if anybody's looking at their calendar, but that is the date, the state set, and the end date is May 1st. We already know that soccer, field hockey, and swimming have already moved ahead. They will be starting on either March 7th or March, March 8th. Mr. Keys is working hard, all, he's got the plans all together, he's got practice, he sat with all of the head coaches. Tonight, we have on hand with us, as we're talking about high risk, we have our head football coach, Matt Crossman. Coach Crossman's here with us tonight, as well as the other sport that we'll be talking about tonight is volleyball. So with these, we know volleyball and football, that we had to submit a preparedness plan to Dr. Leonard. Mr. Keys and I met with him today at 3:30. He has approved both of our plans for volleyball and football. His signature is signed, and it's back in our possession. He has agreed that both of our plans, we've gone all through them in detail with him, and so those were approved today. And so those were approved today. But we have Coach Crossman here for any questions the board may have, as well as we work through tonight's presentation. The next slide, I very quickly want to, I know you've seen the New York Forward dashboard. I've shown this to the Board of Education a few different times. But when you take a look today, this is yesterday's data, but it's updated for today. And at this point in time, the seven-day rolling average is at 2.2% for Warren County. When I spoke of the capital region, something I want to clarify to the board, the capital region, so Warren County Public Health has put together, it's Warren County and the capital region. So it's an average of all of these counties that the second calculation is. And at this point in time, I believe the last time we checked, it was 1.9% for the average of all of these counties. So it's Warren County and the capital region, the average of these. Also, I want to, I did show the board this the other day. We do have, as of today, we have two active cases here on campus right now. I know everyone in the community received my email today. We tell people whenever we have any notifications. So we have two as of today. Again, when we're at January 11th, we're at 26 active cases, and one of these cases drops off on Thursday. As I know, the board has asked, you've seen this slide before. So the other night, I was able to show the board this slide. And I said, these were all the clubs, activities, and sports that have started up. But in the meantime, here's what's been posted and moved forward. So at our high school, you can see all of these clubs have been posted. Mr. Switzer has been working, we've made, Mr. Jones, our athletic trainer, he's a person that checks in with every club that wants to start up. They have to go through a rigorous process. And Mr. Switzer and Mr. Jones go through every COVID protocol with each of the clubs that's starting up and/or club advisors. So these are the high school pieces that have been posted for the Board of Education to see. You'll see them on March 8th for recommendations. And then the next slide shows the middle school and the WHBI clubs that have also been posted and are moving forward. We've had dialogue around the drama production in the middle school, so we're excited to get that up and running as well. All of these clubs and activities have been posted, and we look for a March 8th recommendation. One looming piece that I forgot to say on the very first slide, that you don't have to go back to, Mr. Luthringer. But we do have, for spring sports, there still is one sport that needs the Board of Education's approval, and that is boys' lacrosse. So that is down the road, but I want to make sure that I throw that in. So the two that we're here to talk about tonight are football and volleyball. And so as we move into the preparedness plan, and I'm going to ask Mr. Keys to speak, a lot of effort was put in on his part, a lot of working with other athletic directors. And I want to thank him for that, the efforts that he has put forth to get ready and to be able to submit to Dr. Leonard so he could give us feedback. We know we're on a deadline because Section 2 has told us. If we're, you know, they want to know which schools have it adopted by the Board of Education are moving forward. Mr. Keys put in countless hours to get this, these two preparedness plans ready. And it only felt even better today when Dr. Leonard told us that he thought that Mr. Keys had done a fantastic job in putting it together. So I'd like to turn it over. Thank you, Mr. Keys.
Thank you, Mr. Gannon. Thank you, Board of Education. As you can see here in this slide, our preparedness plan highlights. I've presented this to you twice already, so I don't want to read bullet to bullet. However, the majority of the general preparedness aspect of the plan is very much the same. It's the sports-specific aspect that has been added to it. But one thing that I will clarify on the last bullet of this slide is that the events and contests will be restricted to take place within the capital region counties and the counties within our league. If I could have Mr. Luthringer progress to the next slide. You can see here that the yellow counties indicated on this slide indicate that they are participating in high-risk sports. There are four counties currently, or as of the date of this slide, which is, I think, February 18th, indicate that they are not playing. Jefferson County, Hamilton County, Fulton County, and Herkimer. Fulton County makes up some schools within our league. They have since been given the okay to play within their own county. However, their metric has not been met at that 4% level yet, which would exclude them from participation with any other schools, particularly ours, within the league. So at this point, Fulton County has been cleared to play, so we're down to three counties statewide. However, they would have to get below the 4.0 metric in order to be eligible to compete against other schools within the league. The touch base on a couple of the volleyball highlights here, as I've mentioned, or Mr. Gannon, I mentioned before, I have collaborated with our league athletic directors, as well as our Class A athletic directors in the sport of football. And then also further collaboration with our league athletic directors, or excuse me, our Warren County athletic directors. So in the sport of volleyball, there are several highlights indicated within the preparedness plan to demonstrate safety, really reducing the use of locker rooms. Students are required to come to practices and contests prepared to play. Teams bringing their own equipment. The coach of the home team is responsible for the screening process. That's something that will be covered extensively within our coaching meetings. Face coverings at all times. Players will sanitize their hands in between sets. So there's periodic breaks built within a practice or a contest to disinfect. Certain aspects of apparel have been approved. And limiting of attendance to essential personnel only, particularly in cases where you have indoor events. Volleyball being a indoor sport, therefore, at this point, no spectators. We have the streaming capabilities through our auto camera that would be available to our families. And that's based on the current metric. These matches will be live streamed. In regards to football, once again, face coverings worn at all times. Player sanitizing hands between quarters. Sanitation of the ball throughout the game. The team box along the sideline can be extended to the 10-yard line on either side of the field to spread out the benches so that students are socially distanced when standing on the sidelines. We talked about our outdoor sports, having the ability to have spectators. That would be football, soccer, field hockey. Two spectators per player is the recommendation from the New York State guidance, given to us by NISPA and endorsed by the Governor's Office. Individuals, there's a process that we could do to ensure this. Certainly involves some coordination in having some people positioned throughout the campus. But ultimately, there's a pass system along with a pass list. And an individual coming into a contest would have to have both the pass and the on-the-list in order to be eligible. Once again, these events would be live streamed where, when possible. In the sport of football, to reduce the number of people required to be at a contest, one of the things is the home team has agreed to livestream or to tape the event and then share with the visiting team just to reduce the number of people necessary to video an event. In preparation for the season, we have secured some venues. I haven't invested an awful lot of time and resources into this because of lack of approval at this point. However, in the case of approval, we have had conversations with the Chase Sports Complex in Southwoods Falls, Golden Goal in Fort Anne. And one of the other things that we have worked with our own maintenance staff and ground staff is the overflow parking lots and making sure that we have systems for that. Lee Rounds, who does a phenomenal job with grounds here at Queensberry, has already coordinated with me and Mr. Gannon on ways to potentially clear some of the snow and ice off of some of the playing surfaces so that we can get thaw a little bit quicker here in the spring. We're waiting until the weather breaks in order to do that because we don't want to force the frost into the ground any further than we need to. But there is a design plan for that for our on-campus facilities. Testing of athletes in a recent New York State Education Department memo. We had talked in previous discussions about the opportunities or the options of mandatory testing for all students participating in high-risk sports and also having students go full virtual who decide to participate in high-risk sports. However, SED has come out with a memo last week indicating that that is not permitted. So to summarize everything that is on this slide, essentially, we are not allowed to force a change in a student's academic program based on their participation in any extracurricular activity. And then we are also not able to exclude students from extracurricular activities if they do not consent to COVID-19 testing. Any testing would have to be done on a voluntary basis. At this time, once again, I would just ask if there are any questions of the Board of Education that can be further clarified or answered that have been done so within the preparedness plan.
Rich, I have a question on football. Is there any modifications to the play itself or rules for adapting with COVID?
Not to my knowledge, no.
So full aside, for each team, number of players? Nothing's been modified as far as that goes?
Nothing has been modified in terms of the actual game, rules associated with the game. Like I said, I mentioned modifications to the sideline, where students would be allowed to extend down the sideline all the way to the 10-yard line on either half of the field to maintain the appropriate spacing. We've had some discussions about the number of participants for both a varsity level or your JV level program right now. Because football is played at the classification Section 2 level, for all Class A schools would have to agree to those same regulations. And that has not been determined by Section 2. There's a belief that it won't be, that participation at this point in time won't necessarily be limited. If we were to look at our roster size from the previous five years, I would say that our varsity football team averages somewhere between 30 and 40 students any given year. Would that be accurate, Coach Crossman?
37 to 38.
37 to 38 over the last several years.
And face masks would be different?
I'm just going to ask the next thing, was there any modifications with the mask? Is there going to be a mask put in other than the grill?
So there is an option for a face shield. However, the face shield has to be intertwined with the face mask. It can't be a free-standing face shield underneath the face mask of the helmet, but it can be incorporated into the face mask. There are companies that build those. They have created them for both hockey and for football. So that's something that is an extra measure that we would want to entertain.
Thank you, Mr. Gannon and Mr. Keys for providing us, again, another clear picture of what we need to be able to proceed. You mentioned Dr. Leonard has signed off. Do we expect, or have we already had heard from Dr. Borges at Warren County?
We have not spoken with Dr. Borges at Warren County for the recent preparedness plan. I know Dr. Borges and Dr. Leonard work closely with one another. They're in the same health organization, so I believe their lines of thought are pretty similar. But when speaking with Dr. Leonard today, he basically said that he had no further recommendations that he could think of that would further the safety of our students based on the current plan.
And from what I recall from your presentation, we're still clearly under the 4%. We're at 2.2%? Go ahead, Amy. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Gannon. Thank you. Just a really quick question. Just looking for some clarification, Mr. Keys. And I appreciate the plan. You've done a great job again with answering all our questions and everything we need. Because this is just more of a clarification for myself. A few meetings ago, in talking about the testing, I think you used, you said that they were the Abbott Rapid Now test. But then later, I think there was some conversation about a PCR. So can you just clarify what test is being done for those who consent? And do we know how long those results are?
If we were to conduct any testing on a voluntary basis here, we would be using the rapid Abbott, was it Rapid Now? Bindix test, I believe, is what we have with us. It is a rapid test. You give results in 15 minutes of the test. We do not have the capability to perform the PCR.
Okay, thank you.
Amy, to further clarify, I know exactly what you're talking about. So what we said, if you remember, we talked about, and Dr. Borges used the term, kind of, you know, a pause and a speed bump. So if a student tested positive, they would immediately have to go, if they hadn't had a rapid test, to their doctor and have a PCR performed before the sport would resume. So that's what, that's kind of what we were talking about. That helps.
Yes, thank you.
I just want a clarification, so everybody knows that I had that directed from the SED. It's just not sports-specific. It goes for anyone in any activity or any in-person to go to school. It's not just sports-related.
You're speaking in reference to the rapid testing.
But any testing to play sport.
Correct.
Any extracurricular activity. So based on your participation in that extracurricular activity, you can't be excluded from your regular academic program to participate in that extracurricular activity.
Right. So it's just not sports. Thank you for putting that in private before us. We appreciate that. Can I just say? One more thing. Sure. I don't know if you're going to go into this in terms of the presentation, but I have here New York State Football Coaches 2021 COVID-19 Safety Recommendation Plan. And anybody here that wants to take a look at it after, by all means, attend. But in terms of Mr. Weaver asking any modification to the plays itself for happening out of the field. According to their studies, and they base this on all the high schools that did play football in the fall. So this is data that they received from the football high schools that played in the fall. An average play lasts four to six seconds. Based on this study, an offensive lineman, whose contact ratio is 100% every play, which that varies slightly, will average a little over five minutes of continuous contact per game if they play every play on offense. The other thing talked about likewise, a defensive lineman, whose contact ratio is 100% per play, will also average a little over five minutes of continuous contact per play. Based on these averages, no player on either football team, if they play both offense and defense, will incur over 11 minutes of continuous contact, which is under the CDC guidelines of no more than 15 minutes of continuous contact.
It's really just a bunch of simple questions. I'm just curious about it. Last year, when we did graduation, there were, the features were large. Are you going to do that for the fall?
You know what? I'm going to, since we brought Coach Crossman, I'm going to let him answer a question. Coach?
It's more to spectators.
Oh, the spectators. Oh, the spectators. Yeah. Rich, I know we've talked about.
Yeah. So ultimately, the spectator guideline that we would follow is two spectators per participant, in which that we would allow those participants to sit, or those spectators to sit with one another inside of six feet if they were family members. inside of six feet if they were family members. And then everyone else would be separated at least six feet apart from them. So we use a system within the high school gymnasium for our overflow in the cafeteria. We place a queue on the bleacher every six feet so that kids know where they're able to sit. And we use a system very similar to that on the outside bleachers.
And then who would be responsible for getting the crowd?
Chaperones, whoever the site chairman would, I would take on that responsibility to oversee the entire event and to assign the appropriate site personnel to be in those locations to ensure that everything was being followed with fidelity. And at any point in time, this gained some publicity earlier in the fall west, where the athletic director did not feel comfortable that everything would be conducted in a safe manner. People were disregarding the safety protocols, ended the contest immediately. And I wouldn't have any qualms doing something like that if I felt like the safety of the public was in jeopardy.
And then for soccer and field hockey, people usually bring chairs and stuff them up. You're going to allow them to sit up along the perimeter?
Along the perimeter of the field, we've actually spoken with Mr. Rounds to be able to even paint boxes in an area that would provide, you know, visible spaces for people to be located in.
You have any questions, sir? I have just one.
I have a quick question, Dan. Rich, thank you. Great presentation. I might have missed it. Did you say spectators for volleyball or no?
No, at this point, there isn't a plan for spectators for indoor sports.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
I had a question for Coach Crossman. The, that you're here.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, finally.
So with coaching a sport during COVID, it's clearly going to be a different challenge for you, I would think. So are you going to need further assistance or anything like that? Are there volunteers that will be helping you to manage the distance requirements, the mask requirements, all the things that are going to come along with this sanitizing? Is that something you've got a way to set up or are you, Rich, to do it on your own?
We have, as of right now, the guidelines are to have the least amount of outsiders, quote unquote, to be there within the varsity of having four coaches there. I feel confident that we could, that we can run that obviously safe. I wouldn't be here talking to you if I didn't feel like the athletes themselves were in any risk by us playing the sport.
And we're all starting JV football with that, right? How many JV participants do you have?
JV fluctuates a little more. We had, two years ago, we only had 22. And we've had years that we've had in the mid-thirties. So on a high year, you're probably looking at 34 to 35.
Has there ever been any cuts in JV or varsity?
No, no, sir.
Are you expecting the numbers to be higher this year with participants that perhaps haven't played football before?
With the Google Meet that we have set up, we haven't added anybody extra. That would probably in the next, you know, once we have approval, being able to set up another meet to look into that further. But right now, I do not expect more at this time.
Any other questions? Coach Crossman or Mr. Keys, Mr. Gannon? Thank you very much. Rich, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
So at this point, we are scheduled for a special meeting on Thursday. Did we decide at 7 o'clock? Okay, everyone? They want to move it up? 6 o'clock? Is that? Is that okay to move it up or is it expected to be too long of a meeting? It won't be the one thing I'm going to get to do. We'll have an open forum. The publics have not been able to have some input Thursday evening, so I don't know. So if there's any flavor before we start loading this up, okay. Then if there are any questions or anything comes up between now and Thursday, please just reach out to me or Kyle or Rich, Coach Cross. I'm sure we have any answering questions so that we can address those things before Thursday evening if there are any questions. And I said, we would just be the one resolution, and I said, we'll have an open forum prior to the vote. And don't have any other questions. And no need to take this up. Okay. So without anything else to come for the workshop, I appreciate everyone being here, both online and person. Thank you, the members of public, and we'll see you Thursday evening. Thank you.